We'll call this April 3 meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to order. And first of all, we're going to have an invocation by Vice Chair Melissa Merrill.
If you would like to join. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for the rain and thank you for your hands of provision over Union County. And we ask you to be with us with each decision that we're making. And we ask for your protection over Commissioner Richard Helms as he continues to heal. And we lift him up to you for complete healing. And we ask you to be with us tonight as we move into this meeting. In your name we pray, amen. If everyone would please stand.
We've got some special guests.
We have special guests. I believe it's Troop 601 is here with us tonight. And I'll turn it over to our District Attorney Trey Robinson.
I'm District Attorney Trey Robinson, but I'm also Assistant Scout Master Trey Robinson. Commissioners, thank you for having us tonight. Chairman Rushing, thank you for your invitation. I have with me some young gentlemen from Troop 601 Fairview, North Carolina, who are working on their citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. And at your invitation, Chairman Rushing, they can come up front now and lead the Pledge of Allegiance if that's your pleasure.
Come on up, guys.
And guys, you're a good-looking bunch of guys, so we don't mind y'all coming up here in front and getting a picture afterwards either.
Brings back a lot of memories.
Hey, everyone, please go meet and pledge allegiance.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, guys, if you wouldn't mind, just come right along here and the Commissioners will be up here behind us. Let's take a picture. That way you can prove to your merit badge counselors you were here. Just right here, right here in front of you. So this is a good-looking bunch. Your boys involved here?
Just one, right in front of you.
All right, here we go, right here.
All right, thank you, guys.
Nice to have you here tonight. Good luck with your merit badges.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have informal comments. And the only person that we had sign up, signed up online, Chad Rory. Is Chad here? Just state your name, Chad, and where you're from.
Chad Rory.
Oh, up here, up front at the microphone. Sorry about that.
Union County, live off Medlin Road. Been a resident here for over 20 years. Just want to make you aware that back in November, we started the short water line extension in Union County to try to bring water to all the people in Union County. And on Medlin Road, there's a short distance at the end by Lansford Road that does not have county water. We do qualify, so we, me and my father got out and knocked doors and talked to the people. Out of the 18 residents between where there is county water and Lansford Road where there's county water, there's 18 residents and we got 14 to sign up. Just kind of wondering, as I called in to the Water Department, they said that y'all have not voted on this yet. So that's why I'm out here tonight on behalf of those. I think there was 43 people that actually signed up for different neighborhoods, but wondering why that hasn't been voted on yet to this point. Just want to make you aware that out of the 14 on Medlin Road that signed up, 10 had arsenic in the water. That test was required this year by the Union County Water System. And so people in Union County are needing good water. There's a lot of arsenic in the water. So just want to make y'all aware that this is a concern. And Union County, that was voted on. And just wondering why it hasn't been approved yet. So that's why I'm here tonight.
And thank you. And just so you know, we've formed, was recently discussed, forming a committee of citizens to go over watering throughout the county and what it would take to do and to get a Citizens Advisory Group together. And I would certainly suggest that you apply for that too, to be on it and be a part of that so that, you know, we can eventually get there. Whether we do a bond or however we do it to get more water around the county, please get involved with that.
I will. This is like three or four years this has been going on. And this is the longest that it's taken to get approved. So I challenge y'all tonight to work on that and get this approved for the Union County residents. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chairman. All right, and that's all we had. Anybody else want to speak? Okay, close the informal comments. Next, we have public hearing. First of all, we have 23-174, public hearing on the confidential company Project Arrow. And I guess we have Chris Platte.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman Rushing, Commissioners, Manager Matthews. It's my pleasure to bring before you tonight a Step Four Magnet 50 Economic Development Incentive Grant request by a confidential company otherwise known as Project Arrow. Similar to the project, or excuse me, similar to the Magnet 100 grants that you have previously awarded, this grant allows investments over a specific period of time. This one is shorter than the, obviously by the name 50 compared to 100. It is over a shorter period of time. In this case, it's for five years of investments. The company must invest $30 million within the first three years of the investment period. However, the incentive only induces investments up to $50 million within that five years. And then if the company is awarded that grant, then they will receive grant payments over a nine-year period. The Project Arrow, to give you some details of the company, is headquartered in Spain and is a world leader in the production of top-quality industrial coatings. And the company has been in operation for more than 50 years. The company began conversations with our office in early 2022 about their potential investment between $30 and $50 million. That would include manufacturing and warehouse buildings totaling at least 50,000 square feet and the purchase and installation of state-of-the-art equipment. The facility would be brand-new and would be located in the Monroe Corporate Center. And they have the opportunity to expand. This project gives them the opportunity to expand their presence in the U.S. and serving this rapidly growing product demand. The company is considering an investment up to $50 million over a five-year period. If Union County is selected, construction of the manufacturing warehouse buildings would start in early 2024 with equipment to be installed in later that year. The company would hire, we believe, over 100 people, full-time employees beginning in late 2024, and those jobs would pay on average $53,582 per year. The company has indicated that incentives are a very important factor in their decision and where they locate, and we are in competition with other locations in the U.S., specifically Ohio and Florida. Tonight, we're requesting your consideration of a Step Four Magnet 50 Economic Development Incentive Grant in the amount not to exceed $1,175,000 to be paid over a nine-year period beginning in FY 2026, based on the county's tax office appraisal each year for the company's anticipated investment for over 50, or up to 50 million. Based on this investment and holding all other factors constant, including depreciation, the company would pay an estimated ad valorem tax on the new investment of $2,646,000 over that same grant period. Now, we must consider depreciation and other things to give you sort of a gauge of where that may be. And so on the projected investment that they have told us about, as well as looking at many of those factors, we anticipate the grant to be about $788,156 over that nine period and the nine-year period and the tax paid $1,308,372. And again, there's a lot of moving parts there. Depreciation schedules change annually. The tax rates have the potential to change. Tax assessment of equipment can move around. So that's the, based on the numbers that we have been told, that's the closest that we can get in that estimation. The actual tax revenue, again, based on the things that will actually occur each year, that will change that, particularly based on the current tax rate as it's applied to the assessed value. We've presented that, this project, to the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission's Advisory Board on October 11th in 2022. At their meeting, and it was unanimously supported to bring before you tonight for consideration, we do a cost-benefit analysis on every incentive to ensure that the county is getting back more than what they would invest in this company. And so Project Arrow has a cost-benefit analysis ratio of 2.09 to 1 over the first nine years of the project, which is that grant period, and then moves up to 3.07 to 1, or 307% return on the investment over the life of the project. We will present the same opportunity on April 11th to the Monroe City Council, being that it is within their corporate limits, to consider a similar economic development incentive grant. So therefore, we request that the Monroe Union County Economic Development Advisory Board and staff recommend the award of a Step, excuse me, a Step Four Magnet 50 Performance-Based Incentive Grant to Project Arrow in the amount not to exceed $1,175,000 in order to secure this up to $50 million investment. If we are chosen, we will come back and make sure that you, for all transparency, that the company's name will be released and everyone will know who the client is. Due to several factors, including, you know, travel, coming from another country, the company representatives are not available, but available for you tonight, but I am able to answer pretty much any question.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
We do not have anyone signed up for the public hearing, but would anyone like to speak now? Okay, now close the public hearing. Next, we have a public hearing for the Building Agricultural Resources and Nutrition Program, also known as BARN. And Chris, you've got this one as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Again, Chairman Rushing, Commissioners, Manager Matthews, this is one I'm very excited about. Really excited to bring before you tonight this economic development-focused initiative that is targeted to both preserve our agricultural heritage and to be a catalyst to generate even greater economic investment and job creation in what we refer to as the food systems sector. Our office has worked for years trying to extract economic activity, specifically manufacturing investment, from the agribusiness sector. And as the largest single component of Union County's economy, it's, you know, a natural target for our office. Unfortunately, traditional economic development strategies outside of expanding some of the existing base companies that we have here has not been that successful. So as a result, we began to look at other ways to attack this. And the biggest success so far for us is to align ourselves with the Extension Office and the team over there with Andrew Balkam. And so North Carolina Cooperative Extension has been a super ally for our group. We also looked at other counties in North Carolina. Some had done some marginal success with economic development, some have been very successful with the agribusiness. And so we went over specifically to look at Orange County, Buncombe County, and Henderson County. And through those interactions, we began to recognize approaches that may bear fruit here in Union County. Coming from economic development mindset, you know, we know for most businesses, the producer makes a little bit of money, the in-seller makes a little bit of money, but all the money is really generated in the value-added section, that true manufacturing. And so that's where we're trying to look at something here to help on the agribusiness side. So one strategy that kept coming up and finding its way to the top of the list as we were talking about it with the group was developing a facility that would allow producers to keep more of the profits here locally. So for example, if you look around in the Sandhills region, there's Ag Innovation Center. It's the one in the bottom corner with the blue ribbon. It's a facility that provides producers the opportunity to further process their yield as a result adding value back to the product and earning more revenue. And we know that this type of facility would have great potential here. In Orange County, you see in the green building, is the Piedmont Food Processing Center. It provides caterers, food truck operators, budding restaurateurs, and specialty product makers a place to prepare foods in a facility certified by all the necessary agencies. Located in Asheville-Buncombe County Community College, the Blue Ridge Food Ventures Facility at the top is an innovation kitchen that enables small businesses and entrepreneurs to enter the market space with their food products. All of these facilities assist with marketing, business plan development, and shared equipment, et cetera, sort of lessen the barriers of entry for these smaller businesses and give them a greater chance to succeed. So between the EDC team and the Extension Office, we began to develop a conceptual facility that combines all of these attributes, so known as the BARN. BARN, B-A-R-N, stands for Building Agricultural Resources and Nutrition. The facility will be the first of its kind in North Carolina by providing a facility to both assist the farming community while also creating a place to produce healthy food products. What adds to the strength is that both of these facilities that we've talked about in the previous version throughout the state will exist in one facility. You can see at the top would be for more of the agricultural growers and producers and the bottom would be for the caterers and food trucks. And again, because they're in the same facility, they can start to support each other. Other advantage of the facility is, are the education of our residents on healthy eating, food safety, meal preparation for organizations like Meals on Wheels. And also, where I'm most excited, this is a cornerstone of what we hope to will eventually be a food-centric industrial park. So seeking a site where we can be close to the producers but also closer to access points such as the expressway, we started looking and focused on the Wingate area. But to make this reality, we really needed partners for this. This is not something that could be a sole project for economic development or the Extension Office. So we really focused on five folks, and that was the team that we really found. Wingate University has been an enthusiastic collaborator with us. The town of Wingate, oh my gosh, Mayor Hamel is probably our biggest champion. I'm sure he's bothered all of you to some degree. Both of these organizations have seen the potential and how this really will help the town development initiative that's going on there. As a result, the university has agreed to allow us to put the facility on property that they own for a minimal cost, hopefully very minimal, and near the interchange of the Monroe Expressway. And so that will, that'll help establish that, but then also they have put their money where their mouth is also with the degree component. And so they have a food concentration that's attached, food systems concentration that's attached to their biology department, something that will be very key for us. The town has agreed to fund the construction of the roadway and utilities to get to the site, to open it up. The North Carolina Cooperative Extension has already established several programs that we can build on that only others that look, that have similar facilities are trying to develop now. So again, with what Andrew's team has done over there, particularly things like the food hub, which it connects the farmer to the restaurant or grocer or some other end-user, it's just going to be huge for us. And then the connection to the farm community in general. And then our office will be a direct support for the development and management of the facility as well as seeking out other grants to buy equipment and help support the facility. So we're also considering some private investors. We've had some people voice some interest in that, so we'd love to have the corporate investment come into the facility as well. And then hopefully the last piece of the puzzle is obviously the county. And so the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission's Advisory Board and the Board of Directors, along with the Union County Ag Advisory Board, recommend the allocation of the unassigned monies from the EDC grant, or excuse me, EDC General Fund and from the Restricted General Obligation Bond proceeds focused on economic development to apply to this project. The facility also has received endorsements from United States House Representative Mr. Dan Bishop in his office. He's always been a big champion for ag in our community. And this will also benefit from the AgTech program at Forest Hills High School and other schools in the county, as well as programs at South Piedmont Community College. So if we can obtain the support tonight, we are asking for the funding of the first phase of the project. That would be to include architectural design, cost estimates for construction, and for the development of a business plan. This request is for an amount not to exceed $800,000, and that money would be allocated under the direction of the Partner Working Group, those five that are on the screen there, to include a representative and an alternate rep from the town of Wingate, Wingate University, North Carolina Cooperative Extension, Union Center, Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission, and Union County. So with that, I thank you so much for your time. We have several members of the group here. If you have any questions, they'd be available to answer if I can.
Okay. And we did not, we did not have anybody sign up for public comments on this hearing. Anybody here would like to make a comment? All right, everybody's good to let Chris take the lead.
Take the bullet.
Take the bullet. Okay. So we'll close that public hearing.
Thank you.
And now, it's my understanding, do we have both these on the agenda already?
Yes, sir. Under the business option.
Okay, so we just need to add them to the agenda?
No, they're already added.
They're okay to be on there. No need to suspend any rules or anything. Okay. Next, we have staff recognition, the Sustained Professional Purchasing Award. And who will be handling that? Cheryl? Cheryl Wright.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager Matthews, Jason, Ms. Lynn, leadership. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today to talk about the award that the procurement team has received from the North Carolina Governmental Purchasing Association. It's a very prestigious award. If it's okay, I'd like to ask the team to come up right now. Oh, you are here. All right, y'all stand over here. Yeah, so this is the team. If it's okay, could each of you say your name and introduce yourself?
Please do. Go up to the microphone.
Yeah, come on. I'm Vicky Watts. I'm Senior Procurement Specialist.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. I'm Darius Jones, Procurement Specialist. Eric Perdus, Procurement Specialist.
And Corey Brooks, Senior Procurement Specialist.
All right, I thought it was important. It takes a team to do a great job, and we're also thankful to all of the departments that we collaborate with to provide the best service we can for the residents of Union County. So with that said, the Union County Procurement and Contract Management Department met the requirements to receive the North Carolina Association of Governmental Purchasing 2022 Sustained Professional Purchasing Award, known as SPPA. The SPPA award was presented during the March 8, 2023 Annual NCA GP Conference in Banquet, which was in Wilmington, North Carolina. The procurement team responded to critical application questions and requirements that detailed submitting, which included submitting substantial documentation. The SPPA award is presented annually by this organization to member agencies in North Carolina that have documented excellence in purchasing standards during the calendar year. So we apply every year for the award and submit a substantial amount of documentation, and we've met the criteria yet again. I think this is year seven that we are receiving this award. So thankful to the team and all of the departments, and thank you for recognizing us this evening.
Thank you. And I don't guess we're done recognizing. We're going to come up here and get a picture and...
Get a picture, absolutely.
Yes, the plaque. Thank you.
Now, listen, Utah guys, you get on that end, I'm going to be on this end. If the rest of the Commissioners will stand up behind the pictures so we can all... Who wants to receive the award?
I told you to get over there.
Who wants to receive the award? If you're the one, you can. Let's go up, please. All right, go ahead and read one. All the Commissioners in there, too? All right.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I learned my lesson a long time ago by standing beside tall people. Todd Johnson and Jonathan Thomas got a picture with me, and I swear they were standing on milk crates or something. They looked about that taller than me. Next, we have the consent agenda. I think we've got a couple of items that were going to come off. Somebody, one of them was 23-173, I believe, Commissioner Insurance. And then, was there another?
Yes, sir. There was 23... Hold on a second.
23-190. What's the...
That's the authorized expenditures for the property tax audit and compliance services.
Okay. So what we'll do is we'll add those to the end of the agenda right before County Managers' and Commissioners' comments. So 23...
Mr. Chairman, can we add that to, because as we have the item where we're doing the budget discussion, could we add it just prior to where we have that budget special item, which is the vans section? I don't have the number in front of me, but...
Okay, let's see.
It is, his is 23-199. So if you could either add them right after 23-196, that would be good if you're okay with that.
Okay, I'm looking for the... 23... What page?
It's page 28 to 29.
Okay, so right before 23-196, so we'll do 23-173, and then we'll do 23-190 next. Anyone want to make a motion on the consent agenda as amended?
Set moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, now we go to business.
Yes, please, sir.
Okay. We have Noise Ordinance Research Update. Recognize Lee Jensen.
Back in August, Board directed staff to look at the current noise regulations contained in the County Code of Ordinances, to look at that, evaluate the current regulations, research ordinances in other counties, and come back to the Board at a later date to possibly consider some updates to those standards. The current regulations, they were adopted in 1998, so they're almost 25 years old at this point. Again, just some basic information, they're found in Chapter 26, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances. Basic structure, it defines what some unreasonably loud and nuisance noises are. And actually, I'll just, I tested this earlier, so I hope this actually works. Here we go. So it defines what an unreasonably loud noise is. You know, it lists, you know, some determining factors of how you can determine that, defines some nuisance noises. You can see three types of potential nuisance noises there, provides a laundry list of exemptions from the standards, and then defines what the different penalties are. So that's the extent. And due to the fact that it's criminal in nature, violation is criminal, is enforced by the Union County Sheriff's Department. When we looked at it, a couple of factors that popped up, their current regulations are over 20 years old, and based on the comments that we heard during the meeting when the Board directed staff to look at this, the sheriff noted that the county could consider reevaluating the ordinance to increase the reasonability and the enforceability of the ordinance. And I'll get into what that means in just a second. Based on our research, we looked at 17 counties that were either adjacent or had similar characteristics to Union County. So we looked at all the adjacent counties and really even expanded that to all the counties that were kind of adjacent to Mecklenburg, that were fairly similar to us, that were not as urban, but had a lot of suburban growth associated with Mecklenburg. We also looked at some other counties in North Carolina that were similar to us in that regard, Johnston County, for example, I think Randolph. So we looked at 17. Four of those counties did not have a noise ordinance by itself. Those were Anson, Gaston, Onslow, and Stanley. However, they regulated some types of noise through zoning. And that was very general. It wasn't really a defined standard. It was really just generally hours of operation. Many of those, those 17 counties we looked at were very basic. They're very similar to Union County, small ordinance, not a lot of technicality to it. Some had some basic exceptions for activities like emergency operations. Almost across the board, they exempted agricultural operations. There were a handful of other types of exemptions, but they were very nuanced throughout the different types of, throughout the counties. And another thing to kind of consider is that, you know, anytime you have an ordinance like this, you're going to have a lot of competing interest from different groups that either want regulation or don't want regulation, and sometimes those interests are going to differ a little bit. Of the counties that did specify enforcement authorities, a couple of them didn't actually come out and specify who enforced it, but of the counties that did, which the majority of them actually did specify, they were all designated as a law enforcement agency. Most of those are the sheriff. Of course, in Mecklenburg, it was designated as CNPD. So what we found was, one of the best approaches to allow for effective enforcement was to set decibel levels. And I think that's the issue maybe that we run into today, is there's no defined decibel level that you exceed that then, you know, would determine that you violate that ordinance. Some of the counties were very specific, and they were pretty big ordinances. Mecklenburg and Wake were the two that were pretty big, and they regulated different activities at different times and at different decibel levels. They were very intense, very complex ordinances. Some differentiated noise levels at different times by use, such as residential versus non-residential. So you might have an ordinance that said, well, residential uses at certain times can have noise or that can exceed a certain decibel, and then after a certain time can exceed. But that regulation may be slightly different for non-residential uses. You know, the issue there is you're looking at it from a property standpoint, but you may have a situation where you have a non-residential use next to a residential use, and sometimes that may not work too well. Many simply regulated based on decibel levels during certain periods of time. So after nine o'clock, you can't have a noise that exceeds whatever that decibel level is. That's probably the easiest way to regulate those types of noises. Again, you've got a way, you can have exemptions from a noise ordinance, but anything that would be subject to that ordinance would then be subject to those time periods and decibel levels. And then, I've actually got Ben here, who's going to talk about some of the considerations.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, I'm just going to touch briefly beyond sort of the practical considerations that Lee already mentioned. There's always legal considerations when considering an ordinance as well. First, what some may call noise, others may call speech. So there's, of course, a number of constitutional considerations when you're looking at drafting a noise ordinance. From sort of a First Amendment perspective, you must ensure to not regulate noise in a way that gets to the content, rather focusing on the time, place, manner of the conduct itself. Additionally, you want to ensure that your ordinance is not what they call void for vagueness, that it's so vague or uncertain that a court or just a person couldn't determine with any reasonable certainty the meaning of the ordinance, that is, whether I violated it or not. Additionally, you need to ensure that your ordinance is not overly broad, that is, that it reaches more broadly than is reasonably necessary to protect the government interest you're looking for. Sort of beyond those constitutional considerations, there's also establishing and measuring noise levels. There's different ways to do that. Lee kind of touched on that. There's qualitative ways, such as defining a noise as unreasonably loud or disturbing noises. That is, defining noise in a way that's based on the character or nature of the noise. The issue with defining noises in that way is ensuring that you're not overly subjective and subjecting your ordinance to challenge. There's also a quantitative way to define noise and measure noise levels, e.g., the intensity or frequency of the noise. Most commonly, that would be decibel level, but even that sometimes may not get to everything you're trying to regulate. For example, there may be bass that has a low volume, but still may be a disturbing noise to some. And then also, there's the balancing exemptions with enforceability Lee touched on. And then as it relates to penalties enforcement, the Union County Board of Commissioners, if they adopted noise ordinance, that would only be applicable within unincorporated Union County unless the municipality agreed to have that ordinance applicable within that municipality. So I just want to touch briefly on some of those legal considerations as well.
And we'll be happy to answer any questions. We'll want to have any discussion on that, and, you know, potentially if you want to provide direction to staff to move forward with developing a new, some new noise regulations based on this discussion.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, I think we're all pretty much agreed that at the one extreme where you have Wake County and Mecklenburg, that's a bridge too far, but we also have a set of ordinances today that the sheriff has said on a number of instances just aren't enforceable. So I would like among us to see if we can't gain some consensus and offer some direction on, you know, what is a, at least a set of principles that we can embrace that aren't too heavy-handed, that don't impinge too much on people's liberty, people's freedom, but at the same time offers reasonable controls of excessive noise, you know, at times that, you know, we would consider to be unreasonable, and in a way that's enforceable. So that would be my invitation to my colleagues, is if we can gain some consensus on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the other Commissioners, Commissioner Helms?
Yeah. Pardon me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so the question I've got is, I mean, with any kind of ordinance that you have or you consider, the key question is always, is it enforceable? And it seems like maybe there's some doubt there as to enforceability. The other question I would have is, is, you know, how do we, how do we set a specific decibel level? Sound is a funny thing, and you hinted to this earlier, because sound can be a combination of loudness, meaning decibels, or it could be frequency. And so, you know, changes in frequency can be perceived aggravation to the ear. So I would question that, is how do we get to a specific decibel level? And then furthermore, how do we measure this to prove, you know, that someone would be in violation of a noise ordinance? You know, there's a lot of questions, I think, here, before we consider moving forward, that maybe we would need some more information about how this would kind of shape up and look like.
Sure. In terms of decibel levels, we're not, I don't think we would, or, you know, if given the Board's direction to move forward with that, we would not look to reinvent the wheel, so to speak. There's plenty of ordinances out there that we could turn to and then sort of mold to fit Union County. There's different agencies that publish what certain decibel levels mean, and I don't have those in front of me, but my speech right now is generally considered normal speech, and that's actually one of the measurements that they use to base some noise ordinances off of. You know, in terms of enforceability, again, you know, this is enforced by the Sheriff's Department. I would turn to them, and we would work with them to come up with something that they felt comfortable with. And I like objective criteria in ordinances. I like to try to keep subjectivity out of it. So if you have a measurable standard that you can go by, I think that's probably the best way to move that forward. In terms of how you measure it, there, you know, I think Ben alluded to, there's, you know, there's different ways you might be able to do that, but, you know, the primary way is to buy, I think they're called noise meters. So you take them out, you can stand at the property line, and it gives you a readout of how loud a certain noise is. To be honest with you, that's about the extent of my knowledge of how a noise meter works, but I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, Lee.
So I have a question, and maybe the County Manager can jump in and help me with this, but I have a lot of concerns about moving forward with this. I do recognize that 1988, you know, was a long time ago, so it's good that we're finally revisiting this. But I received a noise complaint a few weeks ago, and it was regarding our landfill. And our vehicles were waking families up around 6:00 a.m., like with the beep beep. And people were showing, you know, people were showing up for work to operate the trash vehicles and to get to their routes. And I know that you did mention there were some exceptions, but landfill wasn't on there. So I'm just wondering, are we set, you know, could we potentially be setting the county up for failure? And so it's like, which way are we going to go here on a noise ordinance when we have county employees that have to get to their vehicles at a certain time in the morning to get to their routes? And these are complaints I have received from a neighborhood right next to our landfill. So I'll turn it over to Bron Matthews.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you. And you're absolutely right. I mean, obviously, if we're going to set a standard, either A, we're going to have to adhere to that standard, or B, we're going to have to come up with exemptions, which there are exemptions in every ordinance for how that applies. But ultimately, we want to be fair. We want to make sure that what we're doing is reasonable. I think the sheriff's biggest issue is that the current ordinance is subjective. It does leave a lot of, I guess, latitude for a deputy to decide, is it or is it not reasonable? And it's much easier to pull out a meter and say, is it over 60 and 59 is the number, or is it less? I think what Lee is looking for today is not for the Board to say, we want to adopt an ordinance. It's really to say, we're interested in getting additional feedback, say, from the sheriff's office, because we haven't really involved them in how would this work? How would we operate it? Also, would you be more comfortable in us going the direction of the decibel level type process? And then bringing back to you some additional research, as well as an option for you to consider. And then the Board could then either say, yes, we want to approve it, or hey, we'd like to add this as an exemption, or remove this as an exemption. And I think if they would be comfortable giving us that direction, then we could come back to you with something more for you to respond to.
Personally, I'm always interested in hearing what the sheriff thinks we need to do. So I'm definitely open to that. But again, if one neighborhood just lost the lottery and they're next to a landfill and their decibels are at this number, but another neighborhood can call in a complaint and the decibels may be even lower and something happens, then, you know, why is it okay for one neighborhood but not another neighborhood regardless of exemptions? So that's the conflict that I have.
Understood.
And, Mr. Chair, I think that Mr. Matthews brings up a valid point about additional information perhaps from the sheriff's office, because one of the other big questions, I think, that should be asked is, does the sheriff's office have the resources to enforce this? So I think that, you know, I would be open as well to get more information, but I think at this point, we have more questions than we have answers.
And I guess some questions that I would have, and maybe some of the ideals I would have would be, what about a, like, for example, a concert? Let's say that, let's say that we've had a recent complaint about a church. The church was doing a concerts or outdoor services, which would be protected under the First Amendment of anything, would be protected under the First Amendment, I would feel like. And, but let's say that the concert goes to midnight, 1:00 in the morning. Do we have a current timestamp on like a consistent noise? A truck driving through can register to 70 decibels. I've seen that myself. A loud vehicle with a loud muffler can register very loud and wake people up. But that consistent noise that would be addressed here, is there, do we currently have a 12 to 5, 7:30 to 5 in the morning, something of that nature?
There are some time periods in here, but they are generally for different types of activities. So construction activities are, so this is under the exemption section. Construction activities, as long as you're operating between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., you're exempt. But if you're outside those hours, then it's not exempt anymore. So it's generally related to certain types of activities, not necessarily a hard and fast...
And that's our current...
Yes.
Policy.
Yes.
Events, concerts, unusual, but I'm trying to think of one that I could think of out in the county, and I can't. It's probably best that I can't figure out one, but let's say that, let's say that I gave my daughter a 17-year-old birthday party, 18-year-old birthday party, and it went to 2:00 in the morning, and I've got a live band playing. At what point can the sheriff come out and say, shut it down?
Well, again, you know, under the current ordinance, that would be, I would have to look to the sheriff to see if that qualified for, I forgot the terminology in there, but if it qualified as one of those types of noises, then they probably could. Under a new ordinance, again, it would all be depending on how that language was drafted. I won't speak to the free speech issue, because that's more in the legal realm.
Oh, get ready, I'm about to go Second Amendment.
But it would be enforceable to the extent that the ordinance regulated it. I know that's not a very good answer, but at this point, that's about the best one I can give, because I don't, we don't have a framework of a new ordinance yet. We're kind of looking for some direction on which way we might go.
Looking into that, that would be one of the things that if the sheriff's going to come with us and have a discussion of it. That's what I see as enforceable. You know, those one, two, three-time events that where things are going too long, that a family knows if they're having a party, shut the DJ down at 12:00. You know, if it's out in the county, you know, people should have a reasonable expectation to not have to listen to music all night long turned up full blast. So I can see something like that. What I worry about is, and, you know, we've got an agriculture exemption, but we also have some state law exemptions, maybe with hunting. A lot of our farmers in eastern Union County have to eradicate feral pigs, and they do that with a rifle. And while some can afford and go through the process of purchasing a suppressor and are able to do that, others, whether they're shooting coyotes, predator on, being a predator on livestock, or they're shooting feral pigs, destroying a... or they're shooting feral pigs, destroying a, a field of soybeans. That has to be done, and that's more of a state issue that they can be hunted at any time. So I would not want to get into trying to, you know, get involved in that. So, and that could probably, and probably would be under the agriculture exemption. Somebody working on a combine trying to get ahead of a rainstorm definitely would be a, a exemption. Again, I, usually they're tired because they got up early in the morning, and they're working till as late as they can. But I would see that would have, having to be an exemption from time to time. But the only thing I can really see that would be enforceable would be those, you know, late-night parties that maybe go too long and, and could have shut down a little bit earlier. So how do the rest of commissioners feel about something like that, like a time period on a, on like a, an event that, that definitely can be shut down? What's the thoughts on that? You want to hear from the sheriff on that, about the enforceability of it?
That, that's the big question for me, is, is it enforceable?
Because one, one problem I see is that decibel level goes away after the, you know, and it's gone. But consistent, consistency in it, and, and again, after a certain time period, I think could be enforceable pretty easy if it's just, just going and saying, hey, we're not going to take you to jail. We're just going to ask you to shut the music down. Any thoughts on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would be inclined to, you know, if I can get some support, to direct staff to work in conjunction with the sheriff's department, to maybe come back to us with maybe two or three recommendations. And, you know, we can, you know, perhaps say yes to, to one of those, or, or don't say yes to any of them. But I would, you know, I would very much like to see our staff work with the sheriff's department and come back with some recommendations that we can thoughtfully deliberate on.
And I'd agree to that, too. And I, I, I think that maybe when the sheriff comes, we, we probably need to have some input from these towns, because if the towns don't do it, it's useless for, you know, what works for the towns does not work for the county.
Sure.
Or we're going to be all incorporated into a town, and that's just not, not possible. So maybe if we could get an idea from each town, would they be willing to, be willing to adopt a similar ordinance? And if all the towns are in agreement as well, Monroe most likely has one, I would think, or some of the other towns may would have one.
Potentially.
And if they do, you know, we don't want to go greater necessarily than what they're willing to do. And, and we made, made to the point where we don't want to go even close to what they're doing, because, again, people live in the country for a reason. But as a, as a, as a, you know, if I can, if I can talk you into incorporating, my wife can't watch Cops at 2:00 in the morning. Sirens wake me up. We, we, maybe we can talk, but, but we do need to look at a time period. And, and do other commissioners agree with Commissioner Williams that we should let the sheriff come back with our staff and give us some recommendations?
I was just going to say, Chairman, that I heard you said, talked about municipalities. It would be my recommendation that you, you let us bring you back some options, and, and then, you know, we share those municipalities, because they're going to have different needs, to be honest with it. If you ask them to give us what their needs are, they're going to want this thing to grow bigger than you're going to want it to grow to. And so I, I would let you react to what you like, and then we can give it to them and say, do you want to adopt this or not? And if they do, that's great. And if they don't, they can enforce their own rules and regulations within their municipalities. If you're okay with that, I think we've got good direction the board go. We can, we can bring you back something. It may take a couple of months or so for us to go through that process, but we can bring you back something.
And as a, you know, I can just picture myself, a new, brand-new deputy in Union County going to Unionville, and they say, we don't know what you're talking about. We're not going to agree to that. So, so if, if you're, what you're saying is what we do needs to be acceptable and palatable to the, to the towns as well. Because, again, we don't want a deputy saying, am I in the, am I in Fairview, or am I in Unionville, or am I in West Chapel Lake Park? You know, where, you know, and, and it's my understanding, too, that the sheriff's deputies may not have a thought, well, so if Union County adopts this ordinance, and it's not, and they have a stronger ordinance, it, it gets confusing as to how to enforce it there. So, again, a one-time occurrence versus an ongoing problem, I see maybe incorporating something like that into it.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody let staff come back and give us some recommendations along with the sheriff?
All right.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? None. Okay. Next, we have the Step Magnet 50 Economic Development Incentive. And do we have a consistency statement, sir? Don't need that.
Yeah, unless you have any other questions, there's no other information.
Any other questions on that item? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we award a Step Four Magnet 50 Economic Development Incentive Grant to confidential company Project Arrow in an amount not to exceed $1,175,000 over a nine-year period beginning in fiscal year 2026, and authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. Next, we have the Building Agricultural Resources and Nutrition Barn. And do we, you need to give us anything on that?
It's just the, there's a few actions that need to be taken. You can see them in the packet there. We do need to approve the allocation of funds to be designated, applied under the direction of the Barn Working Group for the purpose of securing architectural design services, cost estimates for construction and development of the business plan, adopt the Budget Amendment Number 20, and then adopt Capital Project Ordinance Number 344.
Anybody want to make a motion on the barn project?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the allocation of funds to be designated and applied under the direction of the Barn Working Group for the purpose of securing architectural design services, cost estimates for construction, and the development of a business plan for, for the barn. And two, adopt Budget Amendment Number 20 to allocate unassigned fund balance from the Economic Development General Fund. And then three, to adopt Capital Project Ordinance 344.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. I would respectfully suggest that we take our time with this, this project and not make any decisions tonight. For one thing, we don't, I understand we don't have a business plan that's been developed for it yet, and I think that's the necessary first step before we engage in architectural services, design services. This is a project which departs markedly from projects we're used to seeing out of economic development. And those other projects have been inordinately successful, but this is a big departure from that. This would be, let's see, I wrote down some notes here. This would be, involve raw food processing, protein food processing, vegetable processing, general processing. So it sounds like to me, there'd be a fair number of employees that would need to be hired and engaged in this work. And that's quite a departure from what we typically do out of economic development. And I'm not saying necessarily that this is a bad project. I just think the necessary first step before we vote on $800,000, some of which is general obligation funds, is let's spend a lesser amount, get the business plan finished, understand better what the requirements are in terms of employees, in terms of operations, in terms of possibility for this market, and start with the business plan and, and proceed with, with the rest of it. You know, that would be, you know, that would be my, my suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chris, if you wouldn't mind coming up. So with our partners, who, who all has already adopted and agreed to the program of these partners you have listed? Monroe, Union County Economic Development Advisory Board?
The advisory board and the board of directors both approved that, the board of trustees at Wingate University, as well as the town council at Wingate. So everybody is.
The Ag Advisory Board?
And the Ag Advisory Board.
And I, and Commissioner, I would like to say that I attended both of those.
And, you know, we have done a lot of work to this point. It, it's not really, we didn't put out all the details with it, but the model that we're following is the Piedmont Food Processing Center. And they have, we have their operating budget. We're looking to model a lot of the stuff that they use, the software on how to run the facility. It's actually run by the users, and they'd be paying by hour. They roughly have two employees and one part-time during seasonal work.
Similar to the farmer's market.
Exactly. Yeah. So everyone is responsible for maintaining cleanliness on their own, and then we would be a backup to that. But yes, it's primarily user, it's user fee. It'll basically be, it will take some time as we build the base of customers, but it'll basically cover itself in cost. So it'll cover the labor, cover the facilities, you know, utilities, all of that.
Wingate University, they're using this as a teaching facility as well?
They can use that, but there, it's going to be also for like the, the business school for marketing that help develop labels for products to, to interact with the users of the facility and take advantage of all the assets of the university.
I guess I've got a, I've got an advantage, Commissioner Williams, and I've been in two, like the Ag Advisory Board and the Economic Development Committee, where we've been discussing this. And there, I've heard some concerns as well from people in the business community of, are we going to be in the business of competing with another business that might do this? Right now, how many food trucks did we hear in the meetings or outside Union County?
Yeah, currently, there's 16 food trucks that are owned by Union County residents that can't place the trucks here. So those trucks reside in Mecklenburg County. So this facility would provide a location where they could be based, plug in, stay cold, dump, dump in the grease traps, and then be able to prep their food in a, in a certified kitchen. And, and to your point, you know, we're not competing with the private sector. We're actually providing a facility for small businesses to grow into bigger businesses through this facility.
And, and this would complement the program at the Ag Center, too, where the, where Wingate University is looking at going in with that agriculture program. At NC State, we had something similar, which was a food services lab, where we had a barbecue fundraiser for the Agricultural Institute Club. And after we sold the barbecue, we had leftover. So we had a flash freeze freezer, which this facility is looking at something like that, that we would go to and we would freeze containers of barbecue to be able to sell to even more people over a period of time. For example, we, one of the examples we talked about is maybe like Unionville barbecue. Everybody loves the Unionville barbecue, but they ran out. And because they really didn't know how much to prepare, if they over-prepare, they lose. If they under-prepare, they lose. So this would almost be a way that they could take that over-preparation and continue to sell it throughout the week, following the, at a safe food level, to be able to do that for, and anybody could rent the space. It could be a, a church, or school, or civic organization barbecue. So I, you know, I wish you would reconsider, because this is really, again, I've heard those concerns about the, are we competing against private industry? And I really, from looking at this, don't see that we're doing that more of an education tool. It's a combination, education, economic development. And the funds are coming from the, the sale of, of land that we have for economic development.
It's for the, the bonds that we passed to develop the industrial park and some of the land that we sold there. And I think Beverly could probably give a little bit better explanation of the exact location.
Thank you.
So what they're asking to allocate is a portion of the fund balance from the county's Economic Development General Fund, which was created when we issued the bonds for the industrial park that we purchased. The timing of the purchase of the park and the actual selling of the first parcel of that park happened around the same time that we actually sold those general obligation bonds in 2019. And the way the timing happened, we actually sold a portion of the land before we closed on the bond. So we couldn't apply that portion of the bond proceeds to the actual land. So based on our bond attorney's direction, we were able to hold those funds in a restricted construction bond proceed account at the capital management trust that could later, at a point in time when the board decided, be allocated only for economic development purposes based on how that bond order was adopted in 2019.
So with that said, I think the question that Commissioner Williams has, and that I would have as well, is if we're using this for education and other things, does it fit the, would it fit the parameters for that?
Based on what we have read in the bond order and had some discussions with the bond attorney, we believe that because it's for an economic development purpose, to create marketing and production of actual products, that it does qualify, and that they're building it around an industrial park model.
Okay.
Yeah, just so I'm not mistaken, I mean, I, I don't question the legality of it. I, I haven't brought up objections in terms of competition with, you know, private businesses. This may end up being a really good project idea. I'm, I'm not even arguing against that. I'm simply suggesting that we take our time with it, because this is a significant departure from what we typically do in economic development. And it just makes sense to me that we would spend a little bit of money first on a business plan before, you know, voting $800,000 to, you know, to start designing it. So that, that would just be my suggestion. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And the business plan that you said you're basing this off of is what?
It's from the, already an existing facility that's probably the best in the state, is the Piedmont Food Processing Center in Orange County.
In Orange County.
And so the, what we've, and there's been a lot of work, and it's been a, and I apologize, we probably should have put more information out there with this regarding what we've done so far, but it's been over a year that we've been working on this. So we've sort of gamed it a good bit inside to see if we can make this work in the business plan. So the business plan will come pretty quick from what we're, we're coming from. And then even the design, and we're going to try to utilize a lot of free resources. NC State's got a lot of help that can help us, you know, with the design, the layout. There's other things that we can utilize, as well as in the business plan creation. Is, you know, look at what other people have done, and then we can modify to that. But we have everything from these other resources. Rachel in our office is part of the Innovation Kitchen Network that's in North Carolina. So we have a lot of resources from all the other kitchens. So there's, there's more to it there, and I apologize, we haven't provided you with more to make you feel more comfortable at this point.
Things that we discussed in the Ag Advisory Board, like garlic peelers.
Yes.
Having a garlic peeler. Explain a garlic peeler in Union County. How does that work together?
Particularly on the farm side, where the grower, the producers are coming into it that, and I know Andrew could probably do a better job of this, but if there, you can take a smaller parcel of land and become really valuable with the products that are on it by finding high-value products that you can do minor things to. So you could have five or six farmers share the, the equipment, rather than one person trying to invest in this equipment. It may be too high of a hurdle, but they can share that equipment charged by the hour and to do the peeling of garlic. Our, our soil can grow garlic fairly well, from what I understand. And so that, if you buy, if you go to a restaurant now, the restaurants aren't peeling the garlic. They're buying it pre-peeled. That usually comes from China. And so we can sell local products to our restaurants here, as well as in Mecklenburg County, by having that machine to peel the garlic. And then they're producing a product and selling it without a middleman and making a lot more profit on smaller acreage. You know, with all the residential stress on our agricultural land, to keep that agricultural heritage here, this is one of those avenues where we can generate a lot more revenue per acre than we could, say, years in the past.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I would just add to that, you know, during COVID, we saw a lot of little small businesses sort of pop up, and I think a lot of times it was out of necessity. You know, people were doing things out of their homes, and they were, they were trying to sell goods. And, and a lot of the folks that were doing that did not have certified kitchens. I, I view this as a, as a way that, you know, we can provide that area for folks and, and again, grow those small businesses, those, those small startup businesses. It could be something as simple as making elderberry syrup, for example. You know, you need a certified kitchen, however, to, to, to sell your products in a larger venue.
That's correct.
So, so, so to me, I think that this is a, a great initiative. I think this one that, that supports what's important to Union County as well. So it, it supports our agriculture community, as well as promotes small businesses. And, and I, for one, would like to see this go through and, and, and see those, those small businesses grow to be big businesses in Union County.
Vice Chair, Melissa.
I was just going to say, a month or two ago, a couple of gentlemen came and did a presentation on the barn project, and we were going to get some more information. But Union County Public Schools started the Ag Tech. and we were going to get some more information. But, Union County Public Schools started the Ag Tech program several years ago, and it has been very, very successful in the Forest Hills Cluster and East Union Middle School. And I've actually visited those schools and seen the curriculum and how the teachers are using Ag Tech in an English lesson, a history lesson, a science lesson, and then acquiring the greenhouse. So, I was a little bit disappointed when I didn't see UCPS next to the Wingate logo. But, I know how successful this was in a, a middle school, high school format, and I know that Wingate University worked really hard to begin their bachelor's program this year for students to begin this pathway this year. And for those reasons, I will be supporting this project.
Okay. And, and again, I would just say that, you know, what Commissioner Brian Helm said is it is a departure kind of from some of our normal economic development, which is kind of refreshing, because I always look at, you know, we have these elephants come in, and we're hunting the elephants, and we're letting a lot of deer go by.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they, these are the small business owners who the only way they really benefit is from tax cuts. And if we give tax cuts to them, that, they benefit from that, but we don't see that all the time either. So, so this is a way that helps those small businesses be able to thrive. I'm thinking honey operators. I'm thinking, again, those chefs that want to open up a food truck and have a place to be able to prepare their meals and prep their meals. So, so again, I'm going to support it, and, and I think that, you know, what you're doing helps a lot of people who otherwise might not be able to make it very long. We had other businesses in the past who've came and, for some reason, haven't been able to do their, their food business. And just because they don't return $2 million a year doesn't mean that we don't need to help them. There is going to be a return on this investment in more ways than we can count. One of the ways, when Wingate University, you know, spoke to me, they, they talked about how they wanted to build a hotel. But, it's hard to build a hotel when you don't have a restaurant to recommend people to go to. Like, you need a choice. You need, where's McDonald's? Where's Hardee's? Where's this? Where's that? And then where's a high-end restaurant, you know? And, and so, the desire here is not only that this comes, but you have some of these students in the culinary arts go on to open their own restaurants there in, in and around the town of Wingate, to be able to attract those other economic development tools, like hotels, places for people to stay when they come in and when they're on the Monroe Bypass.
That's right. And, you know, what the university's doing in the town with the town development initiatives is going to provide those opportunities along that linear park for those type of restaurants.
Right. So, so I would encourage all the commissioners to support it if you feel led to do that. But, anybody want to make the motion?
Motion's already been made.
Yep.
Oh, it has? Okay. So, any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Next, we have the Series 2023 Limited Obligation Bond Refunding. Beverly?
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Manager. You have previously heard about the refunding of our 2013 Limited Obligation Bonds, which would become our Series 2023 Limited Obligation Bonds. Previously, on February 20th, you, as a board, gave staff the direction to move forward with the refunding process. And on March the 6th, we held the public hearing required to refund the 2013 Limited Obligation Bonds. As you recall, the recommendation is to refund the full amount of the outstanding principal of the bonds. The final maturity of the refunding would stay the same. Previously, we had told you that the estimated all-in true interest cost would have been a little bit lower. However, if you've paid attention to the municipal bond market, it has been very volatile over this past month, and the interest rates have gone up slightly. However, we are still estimating an all-in true interest cost based on today's market of 2.47%, with the estimated net present value savings of around $1.3 million, or the equivalent of 5.25% over the life of the bond. The next steps to complete the refunding, tonight, we are asking you, as a board, to adopt the final resolution to move forward with the installment contract agreement, as well as other items. And tomorrow, the Local Government Commission will be meeting to approve our request for the refunding. On April the 17th, we would price the bonds in the market, close on the bonds on April the 27th, and on June the 1st, all outstanding bonds would be redeemed and refunded through the escrow account based on the proceeds generated during the refunding process. Before you make the motion, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the refunding.
Any questions? All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving an installment for financing contract and a deed of trust and the delivery thereof and providing for certain other related matters for Union County, North Carolina, 2023 Limited Obligation Bonds.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. Next, we have the 23-178 Bond Resolution, Union County. Union County General Obligation Bonds Series. This Beverly again?
Yes. So, tonight, this is your last action item also for us to move forward with issuing the Series 2023 Schools General Obligation Bonds. We have not spent a great deal talking about this with the new board. However, as you are familiar, in the prior election on November 8th, 2022, the Union County voters approved $134,405,000 in general obligation school bonds on the referendum. The general obligation bond passed with a 62% voter approval. As you are aware, and we've talked about this, the bonds will address aging facilities that would replace the current East Elementary and Forest Hills High School. The county intends to amortize the bonds over a 20-year period. This is standard for North Carolina, general obligation bonds is to issue those, pay them down over 20 years with a level principal payment. The principal payments for the bond structure would begin September 1st, 2024, and would end September 1st, 2043. Right now, the estimated maximum debt service impact is $13.2 million. That total impact would not hit until fiscal year 2025. For 20, for fiscal year 2024, what is estimated to be included in the annual budget ordinance is $5.3 million. We are currently estimating this at a 5% interest rate for conservation issues, because we are uncertain of where the market will actually be the day that we price bonds. We feel like that's high compared to where the market is now, but it builds a cushion in for our estimating for budget purposes. Of course, after the bonds are priced and we close, we would come back to you with the actual final results. We are expected later this week to receive our bond ratings from our credit rating agencies. We met with them over the month of March. So, this week on Wednesday, we should actually get an update on where these bonds are rated by all three rating agencies. We plan to price the bonds in the market on April the 25th, so just a week after we do our limited obligation bond refunding. And we would close on these bonds on May the 16th. So, tonight, the action that we're asking you to do is to adopt the final resolution for the issuance of the bonds. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding these bonds.
Anybody want to make a motion or have any questions?
I do not have any questions, but I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That this board adopt a resolution authorizing the final issuance of not to exceed $134,405,000 general obligation school bonds for the county of Union, North Carolina.
Any discussion on that motion? I do have a question real quick. Probably one of the larger bonds that we put out was in around the 2006, 2007 time period. Have those been paid off? You said a 20-year period. Are we close to paying those off? We're going to pay them off in 2027?
We, we are still paying down some of that debt. Actually, the refunding that we're getting ready to do for the limited obligation bonds were issued originally in 2006. They were refunded in 2013, and now we're getting ready to refund those again, and there's a 10-year period still left on those. So, there is still outstanding debt from the prior early 2000s that we're still paying off.
So, it'll go to more like 30 years then?
Right. That's correct. Right.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the Appointment of the Tax Administrator and Deputy Tax Collectors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I know it's got Clayton's name on here, but I'm just going to let you know that for tonight.
He stepped out.
For tonight, we have for the board to consider the approval, the reappointment of Van Harrell, Tax Administrator. He has served in that role for, I believe, four years, and this would be for another four-year term, beginning June 4th of 2023 and ending on June 3rd of 2027. So, just, Van is here, if you have any questions for him, but just ask the board to consider that reappointment of our tax administrator.
Okay. And do we want to do everybody in together, or what do we, how are we doing this? We've got other, we're appointing him to vote?
I mean, it could be all, but you've got a number of motions here, so you could certainly take it in, number one, and number two, if you wish to. I think it's probably appropriate if you want to break it up. That's fine.
Okay. Van, do you have anything you want to say?
I'll try. Just the, I'll bring the, signal button. I want to have my staff come up. It's here. We've got a part of them. Kristen Fawkesworth is the Deputy Tax Administrator that oversees collections, and she is unavailable for personal reasons tonight. And we've got one vacancy in her Deputy Tax Collector staff. But, our supervisor is Paula Key. We did poach her from the town of Waxhaw. We're very pleased to have her. Audrey Cruz, who has been with us now for a little over 10 years. And then our newest is Caitlin Nance. At the moment, she won't be the rookie for long, but she's been with, she's been with our office for almost three years now. And they do a good job, as evidenced by our collection rate last year. Typically, when you, when you look at the collection cycle and tax billing cycle, January 5th is the due date for tax bills. By that time, we have roughly 95, 94.5% to 95% of tax bills paid. That last 4.5% is due to their work and what they do. And they do a good job. Last year, I think we finished at 99.83%, which was second in the state by 2/10 of a point. So, we, we take pride in that, and I'm proud of them and glad they're part of my team.
Anybody want to ask a question of this group, or? You're kind of like the Sheriff of Nottingham. You're the bad guy.
Yes and no.
But, we need you. And thank you all for the.
That part of the job, that part of the job is every day. The other part of the job is we raise ruckus once every four years, and then we go away.
Yes. And everything's looking good for Mecklenburg-Union County line, right?
That's another discussion. But, the answer is yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody like a motion to, I'll make the motion, reappoint Van Harrell to his position. And we'll take them one, do we take them one by one? You want to do that? So, let's start with Van Harrell. Do we need any other language of that, Mr. Attorney? Good for that. Okay. Any discussion? Vice Chair Merrill, you got your light on?
Did you want us to read the full action?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let's make a motion to approve the reappointment of Van Harrell to the position of Tax Administrator, Tax Assessor, and Tax Collector to a four-year term, beginning June 4th, 2023, and ending June 3rd, 2027, and to approve the appointments of the following existing positions as Deputy Tax Collectors. You want to vote on that separately or all together? So, we'll do it all.
There's, there's a little bit more on the next page.
Yes. So, let's do it all together. These positions to serve a term that runs concurrent with the tax administrator to include one Deputy Tax Administrator, one Revenue Division Supervisor, and three Deputy Tax Collectors.
Any other language you need? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Thank you all very much for the job you do. Okay. Next, we have Item 23-173, which I believe is, is the insurance, life insurance for county commissioners. Is Julie here, or who wants to take that?
I believe Julie is here. Essentially, and I can talk, and Julie can certainly back us up if she wants. So, the chairman had asked for us to look into what, what it would be or could be for any possible increases in the life insurance benefit that is provided for commissioners. Previously, that number was set at $40,000, and that really followed the amount that was sort of the, the average of employees with their salaries at the time that that was done. And that was, that was many years ago. If you were to evaluate the average of our employees today, that is closer to $60,000. And if the board were to decide to make a change to your commissioner insurance, it would increase the total premium by $56.27 annually. That's, that's total. That's not individually. That's not for each board member. That's one-time additional payment for the entire annual year for the five board members. I know Julie's here. We can answer any questions you might have, but that was the basis for the agenda item.
Any questions on that item?
So, again, like the noise ordinance, that, this has not been revisited in, what, 30 years?
Wouldn't say it's, it's close. Yeah, Julie can answer.
Yes, ma'am. It's been about 30 years since this was first adopted.
So, 30 years ago, the average salary was approximately $40,000.
I think it was around 33, but I think they rounded that up.
Okay.
Yes.
And just to be clear, this item has to do with raising the face amount of the life insurance benefit for us county commissioners. It's not, it doesn't entail any changes to group insurance for the other employee base.
That is correct. Those benefits stay the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Ames, you have a comment or question?
No, I, I don't really have a comment, well, a question. I would say that, you know, I think $56.20 is pretty. Minimal. Thank you. You know, I mean, if, if there's a question about this, then, I mean, I would even be willing to take that from our stipend if that was necessary to make this go through. But, I, I think that this would be good. And I think that everyone should understand too, that this is not necessarily a benefit that we would get, you know, on a monthly basis or yearly basis. This would be only a benefit to our families in the case that a sitting commissioner died in office. So, this is not like a pay raise, so to speak.
And if I heard you correctly, you're, you're suggesting that we would take this $56 annually out of our current stipend?
I would be open to that if that was the pleasure of the rest of the commissioners.
There was, there was some, how much is it? A dollar?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I, I will do whatever you want, but it's almost more trouble to take a dollar out of each board member's stipend than it is. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions with this, or anybody want to make a motion? If not, I'll make the motion, and then we can have a discussion. I'll make the motion that we do increase this to the $60,000 number for a cost of, what, $56?
Twenty.
Twenty, $6.27 a year for combined, not each.
Correct. Combined.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Next, we have Item 23-190. And I believe, Commissioner Williams, did you have a concern with that one, with a?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've asked if this come off consent, just because I need to, unless there's objections, I need to recuse myself, as my wife is an employee of TMA, Tax Management Associates.
All right. All those in favor of lying, Commissioner Williams, to recuse himself, say aye.
Aye.
All right. You're welcome to step out now. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Who can handle this item?
Van, do you mind speaking to this one?
Thank you, sir.
You might as well just stay up here, because you got a next one.
Real quickly, what page is this on, so I can find it easy? Okay. Looks like page 15 and 29.
Fifty.
Tax Management Associates is a, is a firm that.
Tax Management Associates is a, is a firm that the county has had a contract at some level with since the 1980s. They provide supplemental audit review work for us and compliance work related to business personal property taxes. We, we have viewed historically, and the reason this is here tonight, this has been, this contract was viewed sort of like legal services contracts. Money is appropriated, it's just an ongoing service that we have, so this is not a new budget item, it's money that's always been there at varying levels. Something came up this past week regarding payment of an invoice, or actually, two weeks ago, payment of an invoice, and we got to looking at it, and we checked with Lynn, and she went back to the 80s, I believe, and there was no court action ever taken on this contract. So, it's a 30-year-old, in one form or another, a 30-year-old contract, and in its current form, this contract was established, I think, in 2000, 2001. It has been a very beneficial business partnership to the county. They go in and check asset listings for businesses, both large and small, and if they're in compliance, they, they give them a no finding letter. If they're not in compliance, they issue evaluation finding, and then it's up to us to have that meeting with the taxpayer to discuss the differences in conjunction with TMA. All we're asking is that this contract be, actually be taken by the commissioners to allow additional expenditures under this contract based on current appropriated funds, nothing additional, just what we're currently budgeted for.
So, you want a motion to approve?
To approve, I believe.
Contract? The TMA?
I don't mind reading it.
Is there?
Which page was that on?
Page 15.
I've got it, so it's the authorized continued, continued expenditures for audit and compliance services under this agreement through its term, including any renewals, subject to appropriation and consistent with the agenda item, that is what is being requested.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion that this board authorize continued expenditures for audit and compliance services under the agreement through its term, including any renewals, subject to appropriation, and consistent with this agenda item.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed.
And just for the record, I do appreciate Mr. Williams, Commissioner Williams' position on this, his wife is never involved in work located in Union County, I think she, her work is primarily focused in Mecklenburg County and some support roles for the company.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Williams, somebody get Commissioner Williams' question? Okay. 23196, appointments to Monroe Economic, Union County Economic Development Advisory Board, and that is Monroe, not Fundry, correct, Mr. Attorney?
That is the legal name, yes.
Okay. All right, so Monroe Economic, Union County Economic Development Advisory Board, we have applications sent in by W. Keith Alexander, Edwin Elam, Stephen Hanscom, Clayton Loughlin, which I believe he, he presented his today, Denise White, Ryan Worrell, and Campbell Cox, and we have three positions, one of the two vacancies are three-year terms, and they've been advertised, and the other, I believe, is an unexpired term. So, let's deal with the unexpired term first, and I believe that's the unexpired term of Mike Lutes, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so I would make a motion to replace Mike Lutes with Denise White, who's also with Atrium, I believe, so would anybody like to offer another for that position? All right, all those in favor of Denise White to take the position of Mike Lutes for the unexpired term, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Okay, next, we have two other positions, which are the three-year terms. I would, one of the things looking at was the agriculture community, I would nominate Campbell Cox, and then for banking, Ryan Worrell, who has been in the banking industry, so I would nominate those two to take those two terms, those two, three-year terms. Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. All right, next, we have the item 23199, tax administration and reappraisal overview, and Van Harrell, back again.
It's my night. First, I'd thank the board for their continued vote of confidence for me to continue in this role. Saturday marked 23 years of public service, and one previous county with the Department of Revenue, but as of June, I would have been in Union County for 19 years, this is home, and I'm glad to still continue here. So, tonight, we're going to give a, just a brief overview of our department, and then kind of segue into the 2025 tax reappraisal, just at a very high level, because obviously, we're quite, we're a bit a ways away from that, but it's going to get here before we know it, but our goal is to keep people informed as we approach that date. Introductions, my management team, only one-third that is here, Phil Everett, y'all knew him, he's been with the county 20.
Twenty-seven years.
Twenty-seven years, he is, he is approaching that magic number, and so we're, we have a number of our leadership team that will be hitting that number at the same time, so we will be in some more transition here in a few years. Robin Mary is deputy tax administrator, Kristen Foxworth, neither of them could be with us tonight, but Phil oversees the appraisal department, and he's a revaluation manager for the county as well. This is just a snapshot of our organizational structure, this is as of July 1, 2022. With this year's budget, we implemented a new restructuring to streamline some of our staffing and equalize some of the management responsibilities throughout the department. We have two primary divisions, one is collections and personal property assessment, the other is real estate appraisal and assessment, deals strictly with real estate-related items. Within collections, we have customer service, delinquent collections, which you met those ladies tonight, and personal property appraisal. On the real estate side, we have appraisal, which is divided in both residential and commercial, we have our tax relief staff, and then we have our GIS land record staff, which is independent of the countywide GIS function in the IT department, they function solely for tax records and handling information, the information flow for that ownership records within our office. Staffing and application on the management team, there's myself, the two deputy administrators, and appraisal manager, and we have an administrative assistant, collections and personal property with eight, eight staff members in customer service, five in delinquent collections, nine in personal property, and two part-time staff members. On the appraisal side, seven residential appraisers, two commercial, we have four team members in tax relief, nine combined in GIS and land records total, and then five that are appraisal support staff. Here's our key workload indicators. Our implement, the implementation with COVID, we streamlined our customer service into all first-floor visitors, and that way, people aren't up and down the elevators, you're not having multiple points of contact. If somebody comes in on the first floor and they need to speak with someone upstairs, we'll send somebody down to meet them. If it's something that requires an office visit, we'll escort them up, and they'll come in and meet with whoever they're here to see. We have, we also collect, our customer service staff collects utility payments for the county from a walk-in standpoint, and then both by mail and over the phone as well. For walk-in customers, we have roughly 60,000 walk-in customers a year, which is high. That number has continued to increase over the last three or four years, a lot of people are surprised when they see that number, just from the standpoint of with online payments, email, and electronic communications, you would think the number would decline, but it is still, it is still increasing, and I think that speaks primarily to the growth of the county. We answer approximately 100,000 calls a year, in addition to 60,000 walk-in customers. For tax year 2023, we are now up to 100, just under 109,000 parcels. We have a little over 21,000 personal property accounts and more than 240,000 registered motor vehicles. Our annual collection rate target is 99.5%, that is what the budget is based on. For the past, I would say, five years, that's the target number that's been used, and we continue to do that, obviously, our goal is to exceed that, I mean, get as close to 100 as possible, but you'll never hit that number from a practicality standpoint. We currently perform, expected to perform 13,625 annual property reviews, most recent year, we hit 9,600, so we're a little under target on that, and we'll speak to that with, with some of our budget requests as we move through the presentation. Annual tax relief audits, we're required to review every property that's in tax relief program every certain number of years, roughly 1,250 of those per year, last year, we had 1,313, so we felt like we're adequately staffed there, and that work group is functioning properly. 1,700 business personal property audits, that is tied to the TMA contract that we spoke about earlier. Give me one second.
Can I interrupt you for a second while you're drinking water? With 60,000 people walking in annually, especially when I'm thinking back, like, over the last few years and how, how hard it's been for some people to want one-on-one contact, are there any vendors out there that do like a kiosk program where you could, similar to paying your phone bill at AT&amp;T, for example, you walk in, there's a, there's a, similar to an ATM, I guess, where you go up and you pay your bill? Would that be beneficial, or is there any programs that they can do that on, or is some, are most of these somebody contesting something or looking for more information?
A lot of them are looking for more information, I would say the vast majority probably are bill payments. With, the answer to your question is yes, there are kiosk options available. What we have done in the past, and I believe, I think she will, I think we still have it set up, is we have a computer set up that has limited, restricted access in the foyer of our office where they can walk up and pay online. What we're finding is, the people that come in to do that, if we direct them over there, they still need a staff member to walk them through the process, whether it's a technology, lack of understanding there, or whatever that issue may be, we still have to have some of that. There, there are better options available than what we have, and we have a recently signed contract, I think roughly a year ago, with a new credit card payment vendor, they have some of those options, and we will be looking into that, we're phasing in the full implementation with them, but our, our phone numbers changed, IVR has gotten better, we now have text to pay, you can pay with Google Pay, Apple Pay, I think PayPal, so we've really expanded payment options, trying to direct people to do more electronically, but we're still seeing those numbers come in, and a lot of it, honestly, you'll see the peak for taxes in December, September, a little after January, and a little before the end of February, because by the end of February, if they don't pay, they get, their name gets put in the paper, the, the annual tax advertisement that you see.
How many, how many utility payments do you think you take?
That's the bulk of it, I would say of that 60,000 walk-in, is probably 35,000, just based on the normal daily routine.
Maybe I was thinking more than a place here, maybe even somewhere like in the west or in the east, like at one of the library locations, maybe having one there, where, where some, they wouldn't have to drive as far to come out and pay a utility bill or something like that.
We can look into that, and see what, see what the options are, we haven't, we haven't investigated it from a kiosk perspective, we did look into it several years ago, about having a satellite office, and having somebody either in Waxahachie or Weddington, just kind of serve that area one day a week, but as of right now, we've not proved to find, found that beneficial from a business standpoint.
And again, that would need to be board direction, so I'm not, yeah, might be something to bring forth later on.
Yeah, we can do that. On the business personal property audits, we should be doing roughly 1,700 audits per year, at best, right, our highest year at this point is 175, and that comes from a funding question. Right now, our budget for TMA is roughly $130,000 a year, to meet our, what our mandate should be, we'd need a budget of between $400,000 and $500,000 a year to cover those audit costs, and we are looking to restructure some of how that work is done, which will help us do more, but as of this point in time, that, the best we have been able to accomplish with TMA at this point is 175, just from, strictly from a funding standpoint. We have a handful of enhancement requests for FY '24, and a lot of these are centered around preparation for the reval, countywide reappraisal. If you recall back in, I think it was July, August, we came to the board for approval of a contract with a company called Trepp Consulting, to provide us access to an online database, they provided financial data related to businesses for us to begin to investigate the implementation of valuing properties based on income as opposed to cost from a commercial standpoint. There's a lot of good information there, but one of the things we're asking for is a, is a one-time market study with the same company, to take their data, look at our market more closely, and give us items such as cap rates and, and income streams related to the businesses. One of the things, one of the pieces of information that we saw with their data, there, the taxpayer will withhold the name, but there's a property in the county that we have a value based on cost of roughly $21, $22 million. Once we got access to Trepp's data, they had a appraisal done a year and a half prior to our evaluation, based on income, that valued them at 56 million, and so we know there's value out there to be captured, and it's not that we're just trying to capture values, we're trying to make sure everything is assessed equally, equitably, based on the kind of property it is. So, we're, we're asking for funding for the, for the market study for that. Appraisalist Data Analytics Tool is a software developed by a company called Spatialist, allows you to do microscopic reviews of your, of neighborhoods within the county and make sure your data is accurate. They have a color coding scheme, heat map, if you will, that if something is way off from what everything is around it, it lights it up red, and you go study that area and figure out what, what the discrepancies are. We already have a contract with them for two other software products, there's a product on our website called Community, that multiple departments use, fire marshal's office feeds data into that, I believe, planning feeds data and inspections feed data into that as well, so it's really a one-stop shop for anybody that's looking for real estate-related information for the county, or demographic data, all the census data is there as well. And Commissioner Rush and Commissioner Williams, remember, prior to the revow in 2021, we implemented a product called Comper, where taxpayers could go in and look at their value compared to sales in their neighborhoods and around their property. So, we have experience with this company, this will not be a direct purchase from them, this will be an RFP, because those other two contracts have to go out for bid, and so there, it's just a funding, we know the number that's in the budget, I recommend the budget, I believe, for that, but we will, or at least we're hoping it's in the recommended budget, and we'll move forward with that if it's approved. Property owner questionnaire, one of the tools in the year prior to reappraisal is to send a letter to all real property owners, that allows you to have direct, establish communication with them and open those lines of communication, asking them questions about their property. We'll send them some information that we have, and asking them to confirm if that's accurate, or if there's discrepancies, and if there's discrepancies, we ask them to send it back in so we can make their changes, whether it's to their benefit or ours, our goal is to get it right, and so we want to make, that's one of our goals for that piece. We are asking for new, two new employees, one is an appraiser, one is a mapper. If you look through the data on, on the slide here, the industry standard for parcels per appraiser and mapper is roughly 8,000 parcels per person. Right now, we are sitting at roughly 13,500 parcels per appraiser and 21,600 parcels per mapper. It's extremely out of line, we do get the work done, but we could be more effective at our jobs with what we're supposed to do, and our statutory mandates, we have a mandate in the Machining Act that requires us to review all properties at least once every eight years. We cannot meet that mandate based on current staffing levels. Now, we are leveraging technology as much as we possibly can, we feel like we can get effectively between 10,000 and 11,000 parcels per appraiser, that, and still make that coverage, and that, but it would help us to have that one additional appraiser in there to fill that gap. The final thing here is the establishment of a reappraisal reserve fund, that's under the county general statutes 153A, 150. There's an exercise that we go through annually, where we file a report with the state, explaining to them the cost of a reappraisal, and how we allocate funds for that, or how it's covered, and so forth. The intent of the statute is so that when a reappraisal time comes around, that The intent of the statute is so that when a reappraisal time comes around, the funding is available for the county without having to increase the budget for the reappraisal year. Historically, money has not officially been set aside in this fund. It's a budget decision going back years, predating even my time with the county. It's just, it's been an exercise, because we don't do outside appraisal, we don't hire outside appraisal firms. If we did that, you're looking at roughly $7 to $10 million for a reappraisal. We do it all in-house with our own appraisal staff. Phil can speak to that. I think we determined in 2021 it was 3.2 million roughly.
I believe that was very close to our.
So we can do it more cost-effective in-house, but there are true expenses that need to be set aside to cover, with additional postage, additional legal fees for appeal work, additional cost of printing, because in a reappraisal year, and even the year before, if you do the property questionnaire, you're sending out double the volume, which is, and the price of postage is going up at least twice a year right now. That's hitting us hard from our standpoint, and that, those items typically come in between $2,000 and $250,000 for a reappraisal year, and that's just for the, for what we know as non-cost. If you add in legal fees, depending on the extent of appeals, we've had one appeal that costs us upward of $80,000 to $90,000 in one year, and so you've got to pull that money from somewhere. And if we've got this reappraisal fund there, I think we're proposing it be funded at $100,000 a year to set aside funds so that if an expense related to a reappraisal comes up, that we have that pool of money, it's restricted funds, I believe, Beverly's still here, that is a restricted fund.
That would be used for that purpose.
That would be used solely for that purpose of a reappraisal. And so we're asking for that, so if something does come up, we have that bucket that we can pull from without having to come to a board for a special budget amendment or increase in the annual budget process, it's there. And so that's why that's part of the budget request this year. Any questions on that before we shift gears?
One thing I would, we'd fund balance. You know, I know that we have other areas that, other Union County Public Schools. Union County Public Schools has requested to be able to do a fund balance as well. So with the exception of that, I think everything's in line. I don't know, but there's specific language in state statute allowing for you to have a fund balance, correct?
Yes, and technically it's required, but because we do all of ours in.
This isn't a fund balance.
No.
It's not quite the same, but.
There is currently no fund balance for a reappraisal fund. What the state statute allows is you to create a reserve fund to put funding in a separate fund that can only be used for reappraisal purposes.
Okay.
Yes, currently, there is no fund balance.
And is that the only department we can do that with, or?
No, the state statute allows you to create capital reserve funds that can only be used for certain purposes. We currently have the solid waste capital reserve fund that's set up to house the funding for the post-closure and liability cost for the landfill.
Do we have one for Union County Public Schools?
We do not.
We do not.
We have a capital project fund, but it's not a true reserve fund established through those state statute guidelines. There is fund balance there only because the projects that have been appropriated have not been fully spent down, which would be the same for our county CIP fund as well.
Could we do that for the Union County Public Schools? They've asked a few times. Sorry to get off track, Ben.
Are you fine?
Yes, we can do that one or two ways. You could create a separate reserve, true reserve fund by state statute, or you as a board can make a decision to use the fund balance that we have in the general fund to transfer to their CIP fund unallocated for them to use at any point in time for what you choose to appropriate it for.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, Ben.
And Mr. Chair, I'll just add to that. Union County Public Schools gets an audit every year too, and there have been times that Union County Public Schools, because several years ago, the county forced the schools to spend down their fund balance, which like left them with $185,000 or something, which was horrifying for 53 schools in the sixth largest school district in the state. I think it would be best if their CFO and Beverly just communicated like you currently are and just see what their current audit has recommended. I believe in the past, they have said at minimum, the schools should have 8% as their fund balance. But again, I would leave that to their audit and sharing that information with you, but I would not be in support in regulating the schools and dictating what their fund balance should or should not be without the two financial people speaking and discussing what came back from the audit.
Right. You agree with that? Thank you, Beverly.
I'm going to ask Phil to come up, and he can just kind of sit on the front row in case there are some specific questions that he may need to chime in on.
And Phil, tell us how long you've been with us again?
I've been in one capacity or another about 27 years.
Talk into the microphone.
I've been employee for 23 years.
Yeah, talk into the microphone so we can hear.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, you probably know the values by heart, everybody's value.
I'm fairly familiar with the county at this point.
Thank you.
So reappraisal, what is it and why do we do it? Some of these slides may look familiar, because we did a pretty extensive public communications campaign back in 2020, late 2020, early 21, in preparation for the reappraisal and so that people would be aware. Thirty-seven meetings, we had this presentation pretty much memorized at that point, but it was amazing the amount of people that still didn't know it was coming, but we did our best to get the word out there. So reappraisal is a systematic review and appraisal of all real property. It's compliance, we have to do it to be in compliance with state statutes and existing case law, and we do it to establish equity or reestablish equity and fairness in the property tax base. We have to ensure assessed values are reflective of the current real estate market. This is not a prospective look at the market, it's a retrospective look. If you look, once we do a reappraisal, our values are frozen in time for a period of either four to eight years, depending on what that cycle looks like for us. So we're not projecting where the market's going to go, we're looking at our previous values, and you'll see this in some of the data in a moment. We're looking at our previous values and showing you where they are at this point in Guiding principles, rules, and policies of this process is to be fair and equitable. The North Carolina General Statute's 105286 is the statute that stipulates when and how you do a reappraisal. And then our member organizations are the International Association of Assessing Officers and the North Carolina Department of Revenue, and we implement industry best practices based on that. So what's the timing of a reappraisal? 286, 105286A1 establishes a mandatory eight-year maximum reappraisal cycle. There are three sections to this statute. The A2 requires a mandatory advancement of the reappraisal based on population size and the county sales assessment ratio, and we'll touch on that again in a moment. The third option allows for the Board of County Commissioners to advance the reappraisal to a cycle that they deem appropriate by BOCC resolution, and that's where we are at this point in time. In August of 2021, the Board adopted a resolution to move to a four-year reappraisal cycle, which for us is where we should be based on pure counties and the type of market that we're in. We have been on both sides of this. So the middle bullet point here, we call it triggering the reappraisal. So we were the first county in North Carolina history to trigger a reappraisal on both sides of that. We were too high one time, too low another. And in 2012, the Board opted not to do a reappraisal coming out of the recession because the values, the values had dropped too low in the county. And so we ended up about a year after that hitting 119% of market, and you don't want to be that, you don't want to be that far out of line on either side. So we did a, that triggered the reappraisal, that was a seven-year reappraisal that occurred in 2015. Values pretty much stayed flat because the reappraisal prior to that were, was in 2008, I think we lost less than, it was around 10% or less than 10% countywide, so most people didn't experience a change in value. Fast forward past that date, by 20, I think it was 2018, we received a notice from the Department of Revenue that we had dropped to 82%, and which was, but too low. So you have to maintain 15% on either side of the market, which is considered 100%. So that's, at that point, as much as we grew in 2021 is why we came back to the Board, because we were seeing the movement in the market that we were going to trigger if we didn't have a four-year cycle. We triggered anyway, even though we adopted the four-year cycle, which actually would have put us on a four-year reappraisal, just like the Board had already taken action to do. In February of 2022, we received a notice from the Department of Revenue that we were at 73% of market one year after reappraisal. Nobody's ever seen the market move that fast. In 2021, 27 counties triggered based on that statute. So either way, we were going to do a 2025 reappraisal, whether it was by Board resolution or by statute, statutory mandate. How do we do it? The Board adopts a uniform schedule of values. This is a schedule that Phil and his staff worked extensively on. They will be working heavily on it over the next year and a half to develop that and build it based on sales data. It establishes all the rates and procedures to be in effect for the next reappraisal cycle. It's required to be adopted for every reappraisal cycle by the Board. It uses data from qualified and valid sales along with regional construction cost indexes. It captures the value of the current real estate market, as I said earlier, it's retrospective in nature, and it details all the rates that are used in the valuation process. Relevant county data, 108,995 parcels for 2023, that's an increase of 4,938 parcels since the 2021 reappraisal. Our total market value for 2022 was $35,313 million. Approximately 13,000 valid real estate transactions have occurred since January 2021 in Union County. Currently, we have appraisal neighborhoods just under 900. The number could increase or decrease for 2025. They tend to increase in a reappraisal, that's something Phil and his staff are going to look at. I'll speak to what a neighborhood is. It's not the neighborhood necessarily that you live in. It could, we look at it as an appraisal area, geographic area of like properties. It could be a single subdivision, it could be a group of subdivisions. You could have a neighborhood like Brandon Oaks that has multiple appraisal neighborhoods in it because of different types of houses and different sections of the subdivision. Some high-level reappraisal statistics, the last two reappraisal cycles, like I said, we had, in 15, we had a 10% reduction in value. 2021, it was 33% increase in value. We did receive, like I said, the DOR notification, I'm sorry, that is 82%, I've mixed my dates up on this, 82% in February 2022. In December 2022, the DOR sample ratio, they do an annual study, we were at 70% as of December, in the December of last year. 2015 to 2020, to put that in comparison, we only dropped 26.71%. So over a six-year period, we dropped less than we dropped in the last two years from a sales ratio standpoint. And what that ratio is, is a comparison of the assessed value that we have on the property to what the property has sold for in the most recent real estate transaction. Here's our timeline for the 2025 reappraisal. On January 5th of this year, we submitted the reappraisal plan to the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Fast forward to September 24, a lot of work happens in that intervening time period. The scheduled values will be presented to the Board, we're targeting September of next year for that. In October, there'll be a public hearing. Later in October, we anticipate asking for the Board to adopt the schedule of values. And January 1st, 2025 is the effective date of the reappraisal. End of February, early March of that year is when the notices would mail to individual property owners, and we estimate that the deadline for appeals for that year will be May 28, 2025. With that, I'll open the floor for any questions.
Any questions from me and the Commissioners? Few questions and observations. If that reappraisal had been done between, I think, 2008 and 2015, you would have probably seen even dramatic, more dramatic drop in the values in that time period. It was 10, you said it was 10%? It could have been 15% or?
Based on, based on where the numbers hit, the state tracks, we would have seen roughly a 20% drop between 8 and 12.
Right.
And probably a 10% gain from 12 to 16 had we done the 16.
Right, so in discussions of this, and we've talked about in the past, is doing it more often helps the citizens to understand the process and how their tax rate should come out. Now, you know, when we do this, what's called revenue neutral is what, we're going to post a revenue neutral number, and there's a state formula to it, but I've asked, and I think the Board should ask, that we be presented with a couple of numbers, and that's a true revenue neutral on the houses that we have, and then whatever the revenue neutral is with the growth percentage allowed by the state. So if we grow at 3.4% of new houses, we were actually tacking that into the formula and really raising taxes that much on the existing homes. So I think at some future date, when you find it appropriate for us to do that, Mr. Manager, please call our attention to that. Doing it every four years, again, helps people in both sections, if it goes up or goes down. We have to, this will be going into effect, if there is an increase or any kind of tax bill, it will come out in 2025 or 20?
It will come out in 2025, it would be for the FY '26 tax year.
So all the municipal elections going on right now this year, those folks will be deciding on revenue neutral and their terms? Everybody has four-year terms, I'm assuming?
I'm not sure what the elected officials' term is.
Any town that has a four-year term, the people they're electing now will be deciding that tax rate. In the past, there was some confusion, and I know some of the towns said, oh, we didn't raise the tax rate, so we didn't raise your taxes. The taxes went up, the tax bill went up substantially for some people. So this is not the county Commissioners or the county staff or the county tax assessor raising your taxes. This is a decision made by the county government leaders and the local government leaders as to what that tax rate is going to be, and we will be presenting a revenue neutral to everybody in that, correct?
That's a budget decision. Based on my knowledge of what the Board desires, I would say that would be correct.
Right. Any other questions or concerns? What kind of action do you need with this?
No, this is just for information only.
Thank you for your information.
Thank you.
All right, next we have county managers' comments.
I have no comments tonight, thank you, sir.
All right, Commissioner David Williams?
No comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brian Helms?
I would just say briefly that I'm excited about some of the things that took place in our meeting tonight, more specifically the BARM project. I mentioned this earlier, but I want to restate this, that I think that that really does present a unique opportunity for our county, for both agriculture and small business, and it's a very exciting thing to see. I'd like to thank the individual that stood up here at the podium and provided some comments as well, and also for our Boy Scout troop that led us in the pledge of allegiance. I'm glad to see those young men stand up here and be a part of our meeting. Thank you.
Vice Chair Melissa Merrill?
I agree with everything Commissioner Helms just stated, and I would like to thank Boy Scout Troop 601 for being here and one of their Assistant Scout Masters, our District Attorney Trey Robinson, bringing those young men in to work on their community mayor badges.
Thank you, and as we've been in the past few meetings, still be in prayer for Commissioner Richard Helms and pray for his speedy recovery. All right, with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.